Good evening, we'll call this meeting to order. First, we'll have our invocation led by Councilmember Alshire, followed by the pledge to the flag. Please stand as you are able.
As we gather here this evening, may we be ever mindful of opportunities to render ourselves to the services of fellow citizens to our community. Keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and in those things upon which we build with confidence, let us continue to strive to make this a better place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal, just as for all.
Thank you. We have a few announcements. First, as we're operating under our rules of procedure adopted September 24th, 2013, use of cellphones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk in the official record. Our meeting schedule for January, we'll have work sessions on Tuesday, the 6th, January the 13th, and January 20th, all at 4:00 PM. And on Tuesday, January 27th, we'll have a regular session at 7:00 PM. At this time, I would like to announce also that we have a certificate of special recognition here. One of our attorneys, Bill Nairn, is retiring at the end of the year, and I'd like to present this certificate to him. So, Mr. Nairn, if you wouldn't mind coming forward. You know, we love our whereas's and therefor's, so... So, this is a certificate of special recognition for Bill Nairn for 17 years of service to the city of Hagerstown. Whereas William "Bill" Nairn began serving as Hagerstown City Attorney on January 1st, 1997. Whereas Bill Nairn has provided legal advice and assistance to the mayor and council and city staff on many important issues, including the Safe Speed and School Zones Program, the state of Maryland election law, amendments to the city charter, the cable franchise, and real estate matters. Whereas Mr. Nairn's work, expertise, and dedication as a city attorney has made Hagerstown a better community and strengthened Hagerstown's city government. Whereas Bill has served the city with integrity and distinction for the last 17 years and will be retiring as city attorney effective December 31st, 2014. Now therefore, I, David Geisberts, the mayor of the city of Hagerstown, do hereby express on behalf of the city council and city staff our sincere appreciation for Bill Nairn for his service to the city of Hagerstown. We extend our best wishes upon his retirement and for his continued success in life's pursuits. Congratulations, Bill. Would you like to say a few words?
Just say that it's really been a pleasure working with everyone at the city. I've enjoyed learning new things in the practice of law. Being a municipal attorney is a lot different than being a private attorney. Well, in many ways, it's different. And it's also really nice to be able to see programs and projects you work on come to completion and be able to say, well, I had a part in doing this for our community, and that's been a really nice part of working with the city.
Well, we appreciate your service and thank you for your family for being here tonight. And it's a pleasure to see Mr. Erner, who retired on us last year, so good to see him, and good luck to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You want to... Sure. In front of the desks or behind the desks? Where do you want us? Okay, everybody.
Let me stand on the top steps.
There you go.
Okay. Here we go.
We still got it on.
Can I have two? I need three people to step down. House Member Munson, House Member Alshire, can you step down, House Member Munson?
You don't want me to step down?
What do you want to do? How do you want to... I can't be in the forefront here.
No, you're too tall. Back it up.
All right, this works. You need one step in, House Member. All right, right here on three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Do you have a photo with your family as well?
No. My wife says no.
All right. Happy wife, happy life. Thank you.
Bill.
Thank you very much. Bill.
Sure. See you on my doors.
Why did it go about that till today?
Oh, yeah. He plays the...
Paul Sweeney told me.
We have two appointments to the planning commission on the agenda tonight. Dennis Miller for a term to expire on October 31st, 2019. And just a note about Mr. Miller, he has served the city now for 40 years as a member of the planning commission. And earlier today, we dedicated a volunteer award in his name, and he'll be the first recipient of that award, and it'll be a new tradition that we have at our annual gathering of boards and commission members. So, I want to thank him for his service, and we'll have him in hopefully soon after the new year to receive the award that he was not able to receive today. And also Rodney Campbell on the planning commission for a term to expire May 30th, 2019. Can I get a motion?
No, moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of the appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you very much. At this time, we have citizen comments, and I do not think anyone has signed up to speak. Anyone in the audience wish to say anything for citizen comments? Okay. City administrator comments?
I just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as we wrap up the next calendar year. Appreciate all the hard work of the mayor and council, and hopefully you can move in about and let your thing be accomplished.
Thank you. Mayor and council comments. I will start on my left this evening with Ms. Ny.
Last week, I forgot to say thanks to the ones who helped with the tree lighting in the Hager House, and that would be We Care Neighborhoods First and Thirge Grounds Crime Watch. And I do appreciate all of the work that they do, and I think we've done it now for the last 13 years, I believe. And that's one thing that I did forget.
Thank you. Mr. Munson.
Last Saturday night, the Maryland Symphony, along with Hagerstown Coral Arts and the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Choir, put on an absolutely phenomenal Home for the Holidays concert. It was extraordinarily good and just incredibly enjoyable, and I wanted to congratulate them on such a fine, extraordinary, actually, production. And I also wanted to point out something that's probably not very well-known to many people, but last... Last November the 15th, the city of Hagerstown held a recycle... electronic recycling collection event for city residents for collection of all electronics. It was on November the 15th. It was held at the Sun Stadium, and the event was managed by the city of Hagerstown employees and Waste Management, the people who take our trash. It was highly successful. I know Rodney Tishu, the city engineer, and other members of the city staff were involved and did an absolutely outstanding job on behalf of the citizens. And it's absolutely amazing, the total cost to the city of Hagerstown for that effort turned out to be $1,610.80 because the Maryland Department of the Environment gave us a grant for $15,000. So, for $1,610, the city accomplished... city and Waste Management accomplished quite a bit. Now, it's interesting that there was a pretty huge volume. The fact is that 426 vehicles, cars and trucks, brought enough electronics to fill two tractor-trailer loads of items. And that included, for instance, just for instance, 4,901 pounds of computers, 11,583 pounds of TVs, CRTs. Altogether, there was a total collection of 45,254 pounds of electronic equipment, and this council, this mayor and council approved this, and we can certainly be proud of the results, and I think we need to do it again next year. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Metzner.
Thank you. Mayor, I know that John and Bill have left, but I do want to comment it was good seeing John Erner tonight, and as the year comes to conclusion, things are changing in the city. So, not only are we saying goodbye to John and Bill, but we're saying hello to Mark and his new law firm and having a new city attorney. And, you know, there haven't been a lot of city attorneys in the history of the city, and so congratulations to Mark Warren. We look forward to working with you, Mark. And other than that, I think what I have to say is a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and tonight is the first night of Hanukkah, so Happy Hanukkah. And for a lot of reasons, just for those who get insulted, don't get so insulted. There's enough holidays that a Happy Holiday isn't meant to insult anybody, it's meant to make everybody happy. So, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Years, all that good stuff.
Amen. Councilmember Brubaker.
Well, continuing the theme of past and future, I went to two events at the library. I'll start with the last one first. Monday night, there was an excellent presentation by Paula Reed on the history of the particular... some of the particular churches that are going to be on the church tour, the 26th of December, day after Christmas, in Hagerstown, mostly downtown and surrounding neighborhoods. And it really looked back, the big era of church building and rebuilding was 1870 to 1930. Many of the churches look just about exactly like they looked then at the end of that period. But, you know, and there was a great community turnout, lots of interest. And then in the same room, a few nights before, the mayor very ably presented the city's goals and objectives. There was a nice turnout for that, and so that looked to the future. And that's what we're trying to do, look to the future, not fight the past battles. And so, you know, it was very... And believe it or not, I think they fit together very well because the city does have a heritage, and we don't want to seem so obsessed with new things that we throw out the good things of the past. So, and Happy Holidays, and I'll reiterate what Lou said so eloquently.
Thank you. Thanks. Mr. Alshire.
Couple of things. First, I would like to thank the members of the delegation, the state delegation that attended a meeting with us this evening before this one. First, I'd like to thank everyone that it was able to be held in an open session, and we were able to convey our positions and ideas in an open forum with one another on some of the larger projects and efforts that we deal with. I think that more of that communication, not less, is needed. And it was certainly important that our new state delegate, Brett Wilson, was there to participate in that discussion and get some perspective of where we are on some of those items. Also, just a note, maybe to follow on the theme of other members' comments, just want to say that, you know, it's been, what, two years now we've been in office, and contrary to some of the predictions when this body came in, the sky hasn't fallen, at least that I know of yet. And I think that a good bit of that credit goes to our staff that do a lot of hard work throughout the year, and so, as well as a Merry Christmas to our citizens and others, I would definitely say, I hope they... our staff has a good holiday because they certainly deserve it. And the last is one staff member, well, Bill Nairn's retirement here. I would only note that there was one item that was mentioned that he had a hand in crafting, and I think it speaks volumes of Bill's consummate ability to stay on task for things that I think a huge, huge number of us just simply couldn't do. And as sort of numbingly complex as it is, the cable franchise agreement, I mean, that is just a document of complex proportions that, you know, we sort of glaze over at times, and it takes, you know, a special kind of person to stick to task on something like that. And so, I think that that is representative of the tenacity that Bill had in a quiet way in that position. So, thank him for his service.
Thank you. I would also like to thank everybody for their faithful service over these first two years. And if you missed the holiday concert at the Maryland Theater, the Coral Arts, Hagerstown Coral Arts will be at Trinity Lutheran Church, I think, this Saturday at 4:00. It'll be the kickoff of their concert, and I'll be there and looking forward to that. As Councilmember Brubaker mentioned, the Holiday Houses of Worship Tour is the day after Christmas, on the 26th. I think they have transportation to help folks get around, shuttles, and so it should be a great evening. And I did enjoy the public meeting that we had. It was good to see some different folks in the audience. And it really is, you know, sort of our task to look into the next 100 years. You know, it's always good to know where we came from, where we've been, and, you know, we always get caught up in the moment and what's going to happen in the next year and the next two years. But a lot of what we're making decisions about will have an effect that will be long-lasting, hopefully in a positive way, and I think that's what that's all about. So, Happy Hanukkah, Happy... Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everybody. I hope everyone has a safe and happy holiday season. Hopefully, people will take some time off and enjoy themselves, and safe travels if you're traveling. And that'll be it for me. Anyone else have any other comments? Next item on the agenda is the minutes.
Mayor, hereby move for the approval of minutes is presented for the mayor and council meetings held on October 21, October 28, November 4, November 18, and November 25, all 2014.
Our clerk would like to amend that motion. We don't have the 18th and the 25th, is that correct?
Right, you've got two in there for the 23rd and 28th.
So amended.
Second.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of the approval of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Minutes are approved. Onto the consent agenda.
Mayor, hereby move the consent agenda be approved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Alshire. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Onto unfinished business, the approval of an ordinance accepting a land transfer from Beazer Homes for Terrapin Park.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for approval of an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of an offer of 2.09 acres of land from Beazer Homes, Inc. to the city of Hagerstown in collegiate acres development for the purposes of a public park. Park shall be named Terrapin Park. I authorize staff to begin maintenance of the park as outlined in the ordinance.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
I would just like to say, I think now that Junior is probably close to 20 parks, Junior and his staff, and I think that there are still three frozen positions. And quite honestly, I don't know how he gets it done. I know that we have seasonal help, but I don't even know if we have enough there. So, that's another thing in the future that we may have to look at.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
It should be noted that we're not just simply accepting, Liam, that there are improvements that will come along with this for the actual development of the park.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Onto new business. Item A is the introduction of an ordinance amending the city code and adding Chapter 183, nuisance unattended donation containers.
Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council introduce an ordinance to add Chapter 183, nuisance unattended donation containers to the code of the city of Hagerstown. This code amendment will prohibit the use and maintenance of unattended donation containers in the city as a means of protecting our neighborhoods from the nuisance conditions associated with such containers. The amendment to the city code will have an effective date of July 1st, 2015.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Ms. Ny. Any discussion?
I'm sorry. Mr. Munson.
I think we proceeded too...
I'm sorry. Mr. Munson.
I think we proceeded too rapidly on this subject, but I intend to vote for it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the ordinance is introduced. Next up, item B, introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 216, Streets and Sidewalks of the city code to add provisions for private use of public sidewalks.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council introduce an ordinance to amend Chapter 216, Streets and Sidewalks of the code of the city of Hagerstown. This code amendment is intended to protect the livability, quality of life, and image of our community by placing controls on private use of public sidewalks for certain commercial activity. A new Article 8, private use of public sidewalks, will be added to Chapter 216 that includes standards and restrictions for merchandise, displays, sidewalk cafes, yard sales, and encroachments of structures and objects in the public right of way.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ordinance is introduced. Item C, the approval of a resolution, city of Hagerstown requests to comment to state
Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve a resolution which requests that the state of Maryland allow for an opportunity for the city to comment on pending contracts, permits, licenses, and funding requests, as well as applications related to organizations operating in, expanding operations in, or seeking to operate in the city of Hagerstown. Purpose of this requested opportunity to comment is so that the state is made aware whether a pending action is congruent with the city of Hagerstown's vision and related plans.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? I'd just like to note that I think we're going to be exploring a similar kind of legislation when it comes to federal partners and also with the county as well. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Resolution is approved. Next up, item D, approval of a grant agreement with the Maryland Department of Transportation for the design of the Marsh Run Trail.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to authorize the city to enter into a grant agreement for the design of the Marsh Run Trail with the Maryland Department of Transportation. The grant is $75,000 and has no cash match, and will continue bicycling-related improvements in the city. The grant will be used for the conceptual and preliminary design of a trail from Park Circle to Potomac Street.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? I just want to thank city staff who constantly are seeking grant funds for great projects like this. This is a real... a real great project, and it would be great to see come to fruition. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the agreement is approved. Item E, approval of changes to the city's investment policy.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and council adopt the attached debt management policy, which is designed to provide sound financial management and both protect and enhance the city's bond rating. This policy provides boundaries within which debt issuance and overall debt management processes will operate.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item F is the approval of the mayor and council's city goals and priorities for 2015 through
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and council approval of the attached goals and priorities for 2015 through 2016. These goals and priorities set forth the mayor and council's plan for serving Hagerstown related to economic development, public facilities and infrastructure, citizen-based government, neighborhoods, active healthy living, public safety, and innovative progressive government in accordance with the city's vision, mission, and core values.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item G is the approval of funding for a community coalition lobbyist.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council authorization of the expenditure of $5,000 from the general fund in order to contribute toward hiring the firm of Manus, Canning, and Associates as the community coalition lobbyist. Other funding partners that have provided funding in the past include Washington County, the city of Hagerstown, the Chamber of Commerce, Chief, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Washington County Public Schools, and the Washington County Free Library.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Yes, I want to explain that I have, from our work session last week, I've changed the name of the lobbyist, that the firm of Rifkin Livingston, that was been previously discussed, and which is, I think, in all the years prior to this, has been the community lobbyist, expressed a wish to withdraw if they could this year. And we had an emergency meeting of the lobbyist, I mean, excuse me, of the community coalition last Wednesday, and discussed a number of consultants, of the larger consultants available in Annapolis, that Mr. Frye, who's with us tonight, as well as Mr. Kirchvoll and others had put together. The group felt, and I think it was a pretty strong consensus, that this firm, Manus, Canning, and Associates, and I think it was unanimous, was the firm to go with. The commissioners withheld their vote because they had not acted as a group, and I need to say that it's my understanding, the commissioners did vote three to two to not fund their $10,000 share of this effort. It's my strong feeling that we should move... try to move forward, that we'll still get a lot of value out of our $5,000, that there's sufficient funds to cover any overages this year, and that I think that we can set a good precedent, show leadership in the community by continuing our participation. So, those are the two big elements that have changed since we discussed that last week, but I just wanted to make sure the council understood those.
I move to table.
Motion to table? Well, there's been a motion and a second, so the motion to table takes precedence over that? We'll put this back on the agenda?
If there's a second, I think there needs to be a second to table, and then there has to be discussion and vote on that if there is a second.
Is there a second to table, the motion?
If we can discuss that issue?
Please.
Yeah. I don't know how we have a community coalition when the county is not part of it. It doesn't make sense to me. I don't understand it. I also would desperately like to know what happened to our lobbyists. I've been practicing law for 36 years. I don't generally go out of my way to tell clients to go find another lawyer. There... I need an explanation why our lobbyist would tell us to get somebody else when they're still in the same business. Two, you know, you get back into this thing that everybody accepted when we started this, that there was a general agreement that we're going to pick this one lobbyist. We all discussed it as bodies. We came to an agreement. There was never any discussion about competitive bidding or anything else because there was only one group to go with. Now, we're being asked to move tonight to finance a lobbyist that, for the very first time, we're being told who it is tonight. I don't know who they are. I mean, we're being given the name of a lobbyist for the first time tonight, and more importantly, I... it's not the $5,000, but, you know, I certainly would like to hear from the county commissioners what their position is. Are they going to be part... It is... can you have a community coalition when the largest government entity in the community is not part of it? And do they... is their position, they're not going to pay anything, but they're going to be part of it like other parties are, and then come to the city and say, will you fund it? So, I think these questions need to be answered. And there is funding. I'm assuming right now there's enough money to go forth. That may be one of their reasons. I don't... That may be one of the reasons, I don't know. They may not want to come up with funding because there's enough money to fund this endeavor right now without additional. But I won't vote for this unless I get answers to those questions.
Well, Lou, first of all, I had, my initial reactions were very similar to what you just expressed. But thinking on it, I think, I think we need to try to hold this effort together. I agree, it's taken a free ride. I agree with all the things you say. As far as the lobbyist goes, they, I think it has to do with all the seismic changes in Annapolis. They felt that they couldn't service as well as they had in prior years with all the changes there. They felt that they had to focus on their principal firms, and there may have been other internal reasons, but I think the principal thing had arisen from the changes in Annapolis from the election. Then, as far as the county, yes, like I said, viscerally, that's the way I feel. But I feel like, let's not blow it up. Let's see if we can make this work. Let's see if, you know, it was three to two vote, you know, let's find out, but let's not ditch the effort ourselves in the meantime.
And I'm not indicating that I would necessarily ditch the effort, but for instance, if the county were to say that they voted three to because they disagree, this group of commissioners disagree with what the proposals are, that they can't be part of what we're recommending. If that's the reason they aren't involved in this, then we do not have a community coalition. If they're not involved with this strictly on a financial side, and for instance, I know the new set of commissioners, I could envision commissioners looking at the budget that exists right now in the bank and saying, no, 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 we're not going to give $10,000 this year because they don't need it. But we're all behind the community, we're behind everything, but we're, this year, we're not going to finance it. You may find that I'm more than willing to agree to the $5,000 in continuing to be a part. But, but I need to know why the county commissioners are not funding. If it's because they don't want to be a part of this, then it's pretty much non-existent to have the administration we have in Annapolis and the administration we have at the county level, and if they don't agree with what we're trying to do, I need to find that out. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying I would vote against it.
I'm not sure if that answers, if it's knowable right now.
That's why I'm moving to table. That's the reason.
Mayor, if I could make a comment. I completely agree with Martin. Among the years that I spent in Annapolis, I had opportunity from time to time to work with the Canning lobbying group. They were an outstanding lobbying group with a great reputation of being able to get things done. And I think that they would be a fine representative for us in Annapolis. And I think that the city of Hagerstown is going to need all the help we can get in this session in Annapolis to get the things that we need, and to have Canning working for us would be, would be helpful to our efforts, for our citizens. So, I support moving forward with this thing.
Any other discussion on the motion to table?
Yes. I think my concern is twofold. First is, if, and it sounds like from that meeting, that the county may have an interest in some other firm. If that's the case, I'm not really sure that our coalition, as it has been established over the years, has ever really set up a voting mechanism that says we're going to go with one or another. But what I would hate to see happen is that we get so far into this process because, you know, we hear all the time from our delegates, you know, early, 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 and I'd hate for us to sort of stagnate this process of debate on who we should get, and, you know, the session starts and the session's halfway over before we get done that debate, especially if it's only one member of the group that doesn't want who we as a number of, you know, advocates within the group have selected. And in that vein, then, I'm familiar, or I'm sort of aware of who they may have an interest in, and I'm not interested in that alternative, and therefore, in addition to not wanting to wait, I also don't want it to get to a point where two then say, okay, I'll go that way, and three, and then four, and then five, and then we just rock the boat in an entirely different direction, and then we're sitting here as the body saying, no, we're not going to support it, which doesn't do us any productivity. So, you know, I don't have any problem selecting this group. I think it's a small amount, and I think we need to keep that synergy going in spite of the commissioner's apparent desire to pick another entity, one in which I don't agree with. And the second is, you know, begs the question, because the administration has changed so significantly, and our entire delegation are Republicans, maybe we don't need a lobbyist.
Well, the question is on the motion to table. The motion was made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Ms. Nye. Any other further discussion on the motion to table? All those in favor of the motion to table, please say aye. Any opposed to the motion to table, please say no. It looks like the motion will not be tabled, which means we're back to the original motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson on the approval of funding for the community coalition lobbyist. Any discussion on that motion?
Yes. Just so I am crystal clear, the firm that you have referenced is Manus and Canning? Is that right?
Manus Canning, not and Canning. Manus Canning.
Okay, Manus Canning.
And Associates.
And Associates, of which those associates do not include Mr. Bariano.
No.
Okay. I'm good with the motion.
It's definitely not.
Any other discussion on the motion?
The only discussion I would have is, I'm going to vote for the motion because I believe in a lot of what I've already heard. But having heard one of Councilmember Alshire's last comments about the need for a lobbyist, I also wonder if, after meeting with our delegation and being essentially, basically told that, don't expect anything from Annapolis at all, I don't know what we're lobbying for, given the fact that it's been made clear to us that there's nothing to be had from the state.
I think this year will be a great learning experience.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. The motion carries four to one. Item H, under new business, is the approval of a request for statement of interest for a developer partner for Catalyst Project Number Three.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council authorize staff to post the attached request for statement of interest for a developer partner for an initial pilot housing project as part of the Catalyst Project Number Three, University System of Maryland at Hagerstown Expansion Support.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Metzner, any discussion?
Yes. Just a comment, I've had a couple of folks that own properties in downtown approach me about, you know, what is this all about and what are they looking for? And it's interesting, and I say this each time, sort of one of these catalyst project things come on our table, is sort of the beauty of these eight items is that they're, that we put them out there and saying, we will seed the effort of these initiatives. And one or more may not happen, but if they do not, it will not be because we haven't planted that seed to get that moving, it will be because there isn't private interest there to do it. But that doesn't preclude our efforts to move along any one of the other eight items. And I just, I think that it's important that I'm reminded of that every time we do have this, because there is clearly interest shown on each of these items we've had discussion about.
And I think the point is to demonstrate that there is a market for student housing, because the idea of being a catalyst is that it will spur more private investment in these kinds of projects that we'd like to see happen. Any other discussion? On the motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Metzner, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item H is the approval of request for information for the implementation of high-speed broadband and services in city center Hagerstown.
Hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the distribution of a request for information document for the implementation of high-speed broadband and other technical services for the target commercial area of city center Hagerstown. This RFI will ask interested respondents to provide information as to ideas and recommendations on how best to provide high-speed broadband services to the underserved area, as well as opportunities for expansion into other targeted commercial, residential, and public space.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Munson, any discussion?
This is another great initiative, and it's a gotta-have to supplement the urban strategies. It's a gotta-do.
Yep.
This is a great initiative, mayor, council. This is going to bring technology to downtown Hagerstown, which is going to bring jobs along with it.
Any other discussion? On the motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Munson, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Last but not least, the approval of the use of Fairgrounds Park for a country music fest and exemption of public park, I'm sorry, park rule prohibiting alcohol.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Go ahead, Lou.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and council grant permission for Police Athletic League to host a country music festival on September 26, 2015, at the Fairgrounds Park, and will hereby exempt the park rule prohibiting alcohol only during the country music fest and only for the attendees of legal drinking age in the designated festival area. The Police Athletic League must first secure all required permits for the event and for the sale of alcohol and sign an application permit with the city of Hagerstown, which will outline all details and requirements. At a later date, the application slash permit will be approved by the mayor and city council. City services needs will be reviewed and discussed with the mayor and city council at a work session meeting in early 2015.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Ms. Nye, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this event has incredible potential. While they're starting out small, expecting maybe 8,000 people, maybe a few more, but if it works out well this year, it's possible to think about this event hosting 15,000, 20,000 people in the future. And so, that's a lot of tourism for Hagerstown, Maryland.
It's great. I just want to thank the Police Athletic League for all their initiative in getting this started, and thank you for working with staff and helping to make it happen. Any other discussion?
Yes. Let me preface this by saying I've been at a countless number of these types of events, some of which last more than a single day, and I think they are a good thing for any community that has a group that has the ability to host them. But the one item that I noted, and I'm not certain how it's going to be addressed, that I have concern with, is the rain or shine provision. And I have been at any number of these events where, when you're working with an area that isn't paved, that a field space can get ripped up pretty quick and do some pretty significant damage. I think Greencastle Fairgrounds, I was at an event there last year, and it was, it was like a mud pit about eight hours into the day. And so, I don't know how we address that, but of all of the items here, that's the only one that I see that I hope that there's some insurance that is provided, that, you know, that we use common sense if rain should, you know, deter the activity, or that, you know, that there'd be the ability to correct it if something is damaged.
I thought they said they were getting rain insurance or making arrangements.
Yeah, I thought that was discussed.
When we discussed it with them, that came up, and that was part of their business plan, as I understood it. Now, the question, I guess, is, you know, where you draw the line for the amount of rain, because I would imagine the rates differ.
Please.
Good evening, guys. I'm Nick Carter with the Police Athletic League. We have and are going to look into rain coverage. We will make sure we have it for the event. We are also going to work hand-in-hand with the city staff with Rodney Tissue to make sure that we are not destroying any fields out there. It's detrimental to us with our organization being at the fairgrounds for us to damage any field. So, we will keep a constant watch throughout the week going up, leading up to, specifically the days leading up to, to know if we're going to cancel the event or not.
Well, you also have the soccer league involved too, correct?
That's correct. Hazel was involved.
So, they're going to be right, they're going to be hands-on too, Kristen.
Absolutely.
Yes, like I said, I've been to Ton of the, like, the racetrack the one year for the fireman's manhandle.
Yes, sir.
Significant.
We'll have you out there with the rake and seats.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion? On the motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Ms. Nye, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. The motion carries, and we will be adjourned. Thank you very much. Happy New Year, everybody.